Okay, we are live.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 6, 2021, virtual meeting of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park. I wish you all welcome. I hope that you enjoyed your holiday weekend and the live fireworks for a change. It seems like a long, long time. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 6, 2021. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on July 2, 2021, and was posted on the Borough's website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey on July 2, 2021, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As council president and acting mayor, I preside over this council. May interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. At this time, I would ask Councilwoman Elsie Foster to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I can grab my flag, Elsie. Oh, you got it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation under God.
Thank you, Councilwoman Foster. At this point in time, we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Brill Mittler.
She's absent, excused absence.
Councilwoman Canavera, here. Councilwoman Foster.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
He's absent with an excused absence.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovair.
Here.
At this time, I would ask if any of the council members have any questions with regard to the matters on the agenda for this evening. Seeing none, we'll move on. I have no honors or awards listed by the mayor for this evening. We move on to approval of minutes. Do we have minutes for approval?
Not this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move on to council reports, and we'll go in the order that you will least appear right now on the screen and ask for Councilwoman Tara Canavera's report.
July is National Independent Retailer Month. It's a month-long observation to offer an opportunity for us all to show our local small businesses our appreciation. The Board of Health still is reporting that tick season is really bad this year. Please see their link on the Borough website on Tips under What's Going On section on our website. They're also very happy that the Medicaid for All Resolution is on the agenda and hopes that we pass it. Food and security still unfortunately is very high. We have two programs to help, the Community Food Pantry and Highland Park Gives a Hoot. Between these two programs, we're serving over 300 families. The Mental Health Commission wants everybody to remember that anyone who's in a mental health crisis, please reach out for help. There's the Middlesex County Hotlines, which is Rutgers University Behavioral Health, and that's 855-515-5700. Raritan Bay Medical Center hotline, 732-442-3794. Or you can also text HOME to 741-741 to connect to a crisis counselor free of charge 24 hours a day. Thank you.
Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you. Very briefly, just considering the agenda today. I did just want to echo Councilwoman Canavera's emphasis on Independence Day and month in the lens of shopping independently and locally. Shopping locally has a profound impact on our local economy, supports local jobs, and provides services that you can't get elsewhere. So it's very important. Thank you, Tara. Just the Department of Recreation Summer Camp is up and running, and all weeks are still open for registration except for this week, which launched yesterday, July 5, without a hitch. We're really excited to be up and running. This is a six-week camp, and it runs through August 13. Camp will take place at Donaldson Park from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And we have our day camp, sports camp, and musical theater camp running from yesterday, July 5 to August 13. And you can register now at www.hilandparkrec.com. And I just wanted to thank everybody who came out to the fireworks yesterday. It was a really amazing display of community unity and gathering, and it was really great to see people in person. I think everybody shares that sentiment. I really want to thank the Highland Park Police Department, the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department, the Highland Park SER team, Office of Emergency Management, and the Department of Recreation, and whoever I'm forgetting for putting together such an amazing program, including the Walgreens New Brunswick had a COVID-19 vaccine clinic there. I went over and talked to them a little bit, and I think overall, it was just a really successful program, slightly pared down from previous years. But I don't think anybody really seemed to mind because it was a really great day and a really great display of, you know, of community unity. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hirsch. Councilman Cho Han, do you have a report?
No, nothing to report tonight. I do want to mention that a year ago today, we lost Councilwoman Wolkowitz. Truly a loving memory to all of us. I just want to recognize that and that we miss her.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I really appreciate that. And thank you also for the upbeat comment on National Ice Cream Month. Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, I do. I also want to say it was a wonderful celebration, Fourth of July celebration yesterday. We had a great turnout. People were enthusiastic. I think it was larger than we had in previous years because people just wanted us to gather after being locked away for so long. And I do want to give a special thanks to the staff of the Department of Community Services. They went above and beyond. I sat with them for a while, and they served until it was way dark and there was nothing left, and people were still coming up looking for stuff to buy. They did an awesome job, and they did it with a smile, and they were happy to see everyone. They were happy to serve. So special thanks to everyone, and also the volunteers that came out to help the Department of Community Services. Special thanks to you all. I can't go without saying that I thank the Fire Department, the Police Department, OEM, the SER team, the First State Squad, and also special thanks to River Road that came out to be with us and to volunteer as well. So River Road First State Squad was there. Special thanks to all of you and everyone that came out to serve and to reflect and to enjoy. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, the summer is upon us, and one of the important things that we all have to do collectively is when we ride our bikes around town, that public safety is important. Your safety is important, that you got to wear your helmet. So please remember, as you're going up and about, you're riding your bikes or your scooter to wear your helmet. Junior Cadet Academy is starting, and we have a few open spots. As usual, it's going to be exciting. They're going to be doing stuff like the helicopter, state helicopter is going to come out one of the days that they're doing the academy. The K-9, Middlesex County K-9 Unit will be out as well. And I think they're going to be doing like mini CIS programs and stuff like that. So there's a few spots still available based on some cancellation. So if you're still interested, there's an opportunity to get involved and to come out. And we are also, the chief is, and I are also working on doing a civilian cadet academy. That's going to be exciting. So any one of you who have been interested in finding out what does the policeman do when they're out and about, there's going to be an opportunity for you to learn about that as well. And I'm quite sure Chief can expand on that. I'll let him expand a little bit more and share with you some of the stuff that's going on there. Zone Six. Zone Six has been busy. This year, they have eight graduates. There's going to be a graduation celebration on July 18 for the graduates. They are busy. They're super busy as usual, but they're going to be doing an animation workshop, which goes from every Wednesday and Friday from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. So they're learning how to do animation, which is awesome. They recently had an event, and it's what's called the Zone Six Day, where over 200 people attended their Zone Six Day event. And they celebrated community leaders such as the Police Department. Department of Public Works came out. They gave them an award, the NWA CP. They had food. They had prizes, and it was a lot of fun, and they acknowledged the council and all the hard work that we do to make sure that their programs are a success and to give them the tools that they need. Without, they are not rested. They also have Alpha Aviation that's coming out that will be teaching the students flight schools to be pilots and to do drones. So that's an ongoing program that's going to be happening over at Zone Six. And Power Girls are still going strong, and they are doing their Power Girl programs, which the girls are doing blogs and internet technology, social media, and all that stuff. So it's exciting over in Zone Six. So continue to watch what they're doing. And they are also, let me, before I go to that one, they're also doing a food and clothing drive, and they have partnership with an organization that says Meet the Need Foundation. And what they have done is that they have collected on their own items and food items and clothing that they have collected. They donate to Meet the Needs Foundation, which is an organization, has nothing to do with me, full disclaimer, it's in Kingston, Jamaica. So Ashton found a need, and he made that need possible, and I have no connection to it. Matter of fact, I need to go meet with them because I haven't met with them yet. I wanted to last week, but I didn't have time. And last but not least, they are doing a back-to-school drive, so they're going to be doing their back-to-school drive soon. So I will keep you posted as to what's going on in the Zone Six world. But as you can see, they have a very robust program. They're doing a lot. They're doing their volunteer work. They're doing their animation. And they're doing their pilot school and giving kids a lot of various opportunities. So kudos to Zone Six and Ashton and the team over there. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Foster. Just for my report tonight from Public Works, just briefly. First, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Kim Cho Han has done, recognize the anniversary of the loss of Councilwoman Wolkowitz, who was one of our more loyal council members and residents of the town, and always outspoken and an advocate for safe routes to school advocacy and sidewalk, bicycle safety, pedestrian safety has benefited us in a concrete way as well as a more general way. We have this electric scooters on, which is, you know, worked on very hard by Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, but follows up on Susie's legacy. I also extend best wishes to the family as well. Just a brief report, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, we discussed their suggestion that we revisit long-term our planting and watering schedule, as well as the opting in or opting out for tree planting. And we will bring that forward to the Public Works Committee sometime, probably in early fall, for more robust discussion by Borough Council in the fall. In regard to DPW, you'll notice tonight on the agenda, we have the grant to award the bid for the 2020 DOT roadway improvements for South Sixth Avenue between Magnolia and Benner, South Ninth between Eden and Graham, North Ninth between Raritan and Abbott, Benner between South Seventh and South Ninth, Cliff Court, Lincoln Avenue between Lawrence and North Fifth, and Barnard Street between Central Ave and Woodbridge. So we have an ambitious schedule, and it's based upon funds from NJDOT's annual grants. I note that to everyone, there is a change in schedule for DPW Trash and Recycling this week because of the holiday. Tomorrow, it's the Business District and the North Side, as well as the Triangle for Trash. Thursday is South Side Recycling, and Friday is the Business District and South Side Trash. So please, everybody, pay attention to the changed schedule. The Environmental Commission will meet tomorrow night at its regular meeting at 7:30. The information is on the website. And as to the library, some notes on the library, it's been very active. But first, congratulations to Kate Jaggers, our library executive director, who has been chosen as the president of the New Jersey Association of Libraries for the entire state. Kate brings a lot of talent. She brings a lot of drive. I find it a pleasure as liaison to the library to work on the new projects that she has. One of the projects, very minor, but oh, major improvement proposal, which I will bring Elsie to Public Safety Council to discuss, was the discussion about the possibility of a new book drop on North Sixth. There's one parking space there between driveways, and the library wondered whether we could put in another stop there. So that will be referred to Public Safety for discussion. On Thursday, January, or I'm sorry, July 8, at 7:00 p.m., there is an outdoor live concert at the library featuring Ellen the Front and Bob McHugh, playing selections from a good old classic American songbook. They're both well-known entertainers, played with a number of bands or groups that we've heard of before, and invite everybody to come out if we don't have another event like tonight to enjoy that. Also, the library has been continuing their reopening and broadening with their having their outdoor readings. And the biggest news is they've been accepted for membership into the LMXAC, which is the Libraries of Middlesex Automated Consortium, which allows them access to the digital libraries of a number of libraries for digital loan, for eBooks, e-music, e-videos throughout the county. It's a big deal. I know of other libraries that I do work for also strive to get membership into that group, and it really expands the ability of our library to serve our residents and the residents of the county. And we will go full live on July 22 with that event. And with that, thank you all very much, and that's my report. There is no mayor's report for tonight. So I'd call upon the Borough Administrator for her report. Do you have a report?
Very briefly, and it's also in light of Matt Hale's absence, I wanted to remind everybody that we have a redevelopment entity, mayor and council redevelopment meeting next Tuesday, the 13th. So put that on your calendar if you're following redevelopment matters, as well as there is a planning board meeting this Thursday evening at 7:30 p.m. So I just thought I'd mention those two things because I know he would have. Oh, and Phil, the Borough Clerk just texted me that her Wi-Fi is down, so that she is not on the meeting right now. So just so you're aware of that challenge.
For clarification, can the Borough Attorney confirm we're still recording?
I can confirm we are recording. I can get here.
Thank you very much. This brings us to public.
Oh, wait. She says she's on the phone as a participant. Give me, I'm sorry, Phil, maybe I can.
No problem.
As we announced early, if the power goes out and it seems that nobody can connect, we would, the meeting would be considered adjourned and we'll reschedule the rest of the meeting as soon as possible.
Sorry, I'm trying to figure out which one. She told me she's there, but I think I found her.
I'm looking at the participant list to see if she's logged in there.
Big shout out to Our Revolution and Hetty NJ for being here for this important meeting. Thank you.
All right, Borough Clerk, I believe I have promoted you, or at least you're now on our screen, so.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Very good. As I said, this brings us to public participation at this time. The total time allotted is 21 minutes. There's a three-minute maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda, so if you want to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, please wait to do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has elapsed. She will give you a warning when there are 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button in the application on the Zoom screen. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of a phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as your address for the record. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now. Borough Administrator, would you tell us what speakers we have available tonight?
Sure, just for the record, we have 25 attendees and six hands raised at this point. Looks like the first on my list is David Evans. Please state your name and address for the record. You may have to unmute yourself.
My name is David Evans. My name is David Evans. I'm senior counsel of the Cannabis Industry Victims Educating Litigators. We are based at 203 Main Street, number 149 in Flemington, New Jersey. Our organization helps the victims of the marijuana industry assert their rights in terms of personal injury caused by marijuana. And we are involved in promoting litigation against the marijuana industry. What you're doing by inviting marijuana into your town, I understand you have good news for doing. You are inviting something that is going to degrade your town. I'm very familiar with what's happened in the rest of the country, particularly Colorado and California. You may not know that the majority of towns and counties in both those states have rejected marijuana stores in their localities. The state of Colorado has just passed a law regulating the marijuana industry because it's gotten so out of control there. There are emergency room visits for mental health, particularly with young people. And if you think that you're going to make money out of this, you're mistaken. The estimate in Colorado is that for every dollar they get in taxes, they spend $4 in social services, in police, mental health, health services, addiction. This is marijuana commercialization. It's not just legalization, it's commercialization. And the marijuana industry is going to do everything they can to hook your kids on marijuana. Also, the marijuana of today is very different from when it was back in the 60s when I smoked it in college. The edibles can get up to 85, 90% THC, which is extremely psychoactive and very, very dangerous. Now, I understand that you've got some opposition in your town to this. I've been told that this council is tone deaf, that you're going to proceed no matter what. Over the next couple of days, I'm going to send you some good scientific information about marijuana and the damage that it causes, and I'd like you to think about whether you really want to invite this into your town and have kids walk past marijuana stores thinking this is something that's okay. For anybody that's thinking about starting a marijuana store in your town, there is a federal legal proceeding called REICO. We are going to be recruiting plaintiffs in your town to sue any marijuana store that comes into your town under REICO because of the damage to property values that has been demonstrated by Columbia University.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Dan Stern Cardenell.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardenell, 221 Harper Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Great, thank you. So I just also wanted to comment on the cannabis ordinance on the agenda. We went through this in a lot of detail last week, so I'm not going to rehash everything, no pun intended. But basically, you all know that this is a good thing for the town. You know the public health statistics. You know the economic statistics. We don't have to go through it, and I know all of you better than to think that you're going to buy into this, you know, the war on drugs, Reefer Madness kind of propaganda. I really like this ordinance. We all know it's a good thing for the town, and I encourage everybody to vote for it. Thank you.
All right. Looks like next up is John Xu. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Name is John Xu, 219 West Shirley Avenue, Edison, New Jersey. Also currently the chair of Our Revolution, Middlesex County. I would just like to thank the members of the council, Tara Canavera and Matt Hirsch for their support of the resolution and support of Medicare for All, healthcare is a human right and the lack of healthcare bankrupts families, disadvantages of small businesses, and limits our options in life. The pandemic further showed the need for Medicare for All. If we can provide vaccines without costing everyone at the point of service, we can do the same for cancer, diabetes, and other life-threatening diseases. Once again, I thank you, the council, for their support.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up is Laurel Cornfeld. State your name and address for the record.
Laurel Cornfeld, 106 North Sixth Avenue. I want to thank the mayor and council for adopting the Medicare for All Resolution. The Board of Health, of which I'm a member and co-chair, first adopted a similar resolution in 2012, 2013. But at the time, we could, the council was not supportive enough, so we couldn't make any progress. And I think this, now the fact that it has council support shows how far we've come. Healthcare is a human right, like John Xu said, and the pandemic has really revealed how broken our healthcare system is. And if people don't have access to healthcare, then, you know, having, you know, the best doctors, best equipment doesn't mean much. So I know it took the pandemic to get a lot of people to see this differently, and I want to acknowledge that Congressman Frank Pallone now signed on to the House bill, Medicare for All bill. And I want to thank Our Revolution, Middlesex County Chapter for working on this. I think that, you know, 70% of Americans support Medicare for All, and we can do this from grassroots, from the ground up, hopefully win more support among the House and Senate. So this is, this is a very, this is a monumental moment, and I just want to say thank you again.
Next, I see Dylan Simpson. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Dylan Simpson. My address is 173 Walnut Court. And I'd just like to encourage the members of the council to vote for the resolution in support of Medicare for All. I'm sure you all know the reasons, but just to restate some of them and to acknowledge, you know, this is largely a national issue, but it's really, I think, important for us to show as a town what we're in support of and to acknowledge all the ways that it would benefit our town, both the small businesses that you all have spoken about earlier. It's much easier for small businesses to operate and for people to start small businesses if they're not worried about having to get insurance through their employer, and easier for them to keep employees if they're not having to pay for insurance or are unable to provide it. And if families aren't being bankrupt for the medical costs, then they are much more easily able to feed themselves. So, you know, and those are some extreme. So, you know, and those are some extreme examples, so. I just really encourage you all to vote in support to show what we stand for as a town. Thank you.
Next is BoTian. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Mary BoTian, 709 Madison. First, I just want to say, again, the fireworks last night were absolutely fantastic. And that is the type of Highland Park that we really should be promoting. Family-friendly, everybody getting together in good spirits, everybody being able to walk through the town safely and not walk past a pot shops and courier services and weed laboratories. This is the Highland Park that we need to be preserving. Also, nobody has mentioned, and this really should be mentioned by you folks, that the issue of local control is really important to us. You know, we've been snagged on this in the past, and if you allow all these pot businesses to come into Highland Park, you need to be utterly aware of the fact that five years later, if you come to the recognition that things are not going so well after all, you know, as you have been so advised, we can't get rid of those businesses. They are grandfathered under S-21. We have lost our ability to control the issue at that point. That is really critical, and no one is speaking to that, and you need to address that. You need to acknowledge it, that we will lose local control if you allow them in. You can't get them out again. Also, there's a, in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, you mention that the Board of Ed and our Department of Health and our one lone social worker will be charged with developing programs for prevention. Again, you know, please don't think that you can just wash your hands of all the harms that you are going to bring in by these businesses and expect the Board of Ed and the Department of Health and a social worker to fix for us. You're the ones that are going to be creating this problem. Believe me, we were going to be holding you accountable. We're not going to be looking to the Board of Ed, the Department of Health, or a social worker to address the problems you are going to be creating. You also mentioned in your proposal that there will be a significant source of additional income to be dealt with, to be received, including providing some relief on property taxes and for senior residents. But what are, what exactly do you consider significant revenue? How much money are you talking about? You can't use a phrase like that without some idea.
30 seconds.
The money. And also, how many dollars do you anticipate in the costs to us as taxpayers for the program? We deserve a cost-benefit analysis and what numbers you are looking at. Residents deserve that. This is a huge magnitude of issue on the table, and we've received nothing. Last but not least, you also are leaving open the.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Phil, I see three additional hands, and I believe I marked down our end should be at 7:40, so just so you're aware of that.
So we have time for one more, one more call.
One, unless the person has a very brief statement, yes.
We do have time for one more speaker. I invite the remaining people with their hands up to speak during the the next section, the public section, after the public comment.
All right, the next person is Carl Prey. State your name and address.
Mary.
Probably. There we go.
Hello?
Hello.
Yes, you're on.
Mary, it's not Carl. Big surprise there. I will try to be very quick. I am, I also think that we need a cost-benefit analysis of the redevelopment, but I'm, I don't know we'll ever get that. I have a comment on electric scooters. Did anybody read in the newspaper about the New York actress that was killed in a hit-and-run accident with the electric scooter in New York? I'm really curious who's going to monitor that, because I walked for 25 years over the train, over the river to catch a train, and there were bicyclists all the time on that, and nobody ever stopped them. I think the scooters are going to be very dangerous in Highland Park. On the agenda, I see that there's $6.3 million in bonding, and I would really like to hear a breakdown of what that $6.3 million is for. I know that part of it is over a million is for Buckwoods, I think originally to buy it, but obviously that didn't happen, and it's not clear what's going on with Buckwoods. But I'd like to know what the breakdown of that is. And I was under the impression that the redevelopment was on the agenda. Apparently it's not, but I'd be very curious, because none of you councilpeople have made, have said a word about the redevelopment plan. And I'd like to, actually, I have read an email that you, Philip George, wrote to the mayor about redevelopment, but I'd like to hear from some of you about what you think about the plan that is being proposed. That's my three minutes, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Prey. Ms. Administrator, do we have time for one more speaker?
It looks like we do.
Okay.
The final for this portion, there is the second public comment session later. Michelle McFadden-Dinacola, please. I'm going to have to, it looks like I'm going to have to promote you to a panelist. I'm slowing myself down because that means your video may flick on for a second, so I'm giving Michelle a moment to ready herself. I will try to shut that down, or she can shut that down as well. So I'm now promoting Michelle to a panelist for the purpose of this speaking. All right, Michelle. All right, I started the video, but now you can just state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Michelle McFadden-Dinacola. I'm at 118 South Second Avenue. I was lucky enough to be asked a question today about one of the, from one of the council members about the dog bite that occurred yesterday. And I just wanted to propose that we have some sort of ordinance or some policy that would require a town-wide alert to go out if there is a dog bite that happens on public property. Sometimes dog bites happen inside of a home. I am a person who has had dogs that have bitten. But, you know, that is something that you do during training. Sometimes it happens. When it happens on public property, I think the public deserves to know. So I would like us to make maybe a NICSIL alert a part of our policy moving forward, and I hope that you agree, especially if it's numerous bites from one animal. My second point is that I am absolutely desperate in many ways to ask you to move forward the resolution for Medicare for All. I am 46 years old. My family has had healthcare delivered by the state in Italy for 46 years, since the year of my birth. My family would be destitute if not for the healthcare provided there. Human life is sacred. I don't propose to decide whether or not to take a person's life or not. I think we must do whatever we can do to preserve and secure health for our citizens. Thank you.
All right.
I believe that ends the first section of public comment. Thank you all for your comments. That brings us, I believe, to the consent agenda items. Consent agenda ordinarily is considered ordinance, under ordinance on 20 are not read or debated unless there is a request by a member of council.
Bill.
Yes.
You skipped the ordinances.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have the list in, mixed up. I apologize. Thank you. So our next then is our ordinances which require a second reading. I'd ask the clerk for a call on 12A, reporting on advertising the Salary Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title.
An ordinance to provide for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer and employee of the Borough of Highland Park and the method of payment of such compensation was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit, it's a publication or a file. The ordinance was posted and made available for a public inspection as required by law.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
No move. Second.
We'll open the public hearing then with regard to the second reading of the Salary Ordinance Amendment. Any public comment?
Members of the public, please raise your hand and would like to comment. I do not see any, Phil.
Thank you. Close the public comment then. Is there a resolution on 721-166 to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
No move.
Motion to adopt.
There's a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passing will be duly advertised. Next motion on the, next ordinance on the list is an ordinance for introduction on first reading, 13A. Madam Clerk, would you report on the introduction of the Electric Scooter Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance licensing electric scooters and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park by adding Article 5 to Chapter 247 of said code has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Is there a motion by council to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title under Resolution 7-21-167?
Motion to adopt.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the motion?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Kim Cho Han for her work and her experience on this ordinance, which helped me to decide a lot on this. I vote yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, and I just want to thank the Public Safety Committee, obviously, for putting a lot of work into this, as well as the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, who combed over this ordinance carefully with their own feedback, and this is just really exciting, and I think it's very exciting for Highland Park. Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and I also like to thank Public Safety too. If you really read, the ordinance is pretty lengthy, hence the reason why they had to go back last council meeting and work on it. For, for us people like myself that already had scooters in town, it talks about updating our lighting on the scooters to provide better safety for us right now. I have a little light, and it's probably not up to the public safety standards. It also talks about registering our scooter. So many, you know, like scooters start between $300 and $400, so it would be nice to register it as well with the police department. I really hope that as we talk, as we, economic development starts talking more about the shared micro-mobility in Highland Park, that we can really do it right. I know New Brunswick had some hurdles to get over in the beginning about safety and people on the sidewalk and people just leaving the scooters everywhere. I really hope that we can do it right, and I don't have to receive a call later like, we're pulling the scooter program. You know, I really hope we can do this correctly, and it can go well, and we won't have any problems with it. So definitely, yes, yes, yes.
All right, so a motion to introduce carries. So the next reading and vote on second reading with public comment will be on August 3rd. Madam Clerk, would you report on the introduction of the cannabis ordinance for consideration on first reading by title? Resolution 7-21-171.
You skipped the one before it.
I'm sorry. A report on the introduction of the ordinance to terminate and vacate a drainage easement for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
An ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, terminating and vacating a drainage easement on Block 2001, formerly Block 75, Lot 15.02, on the Borough of Highland Park tax map, has been introduced in writing by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Is there a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance under Resolution 7-21-170?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That matter will be heard for second reading and public comment at the meeting on August 3rd. Now, brings us to the introduction of the cannabis ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title. Madam Clerk, I would ask you to report on the introduction of that ordinance.
An ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, New Jersey, amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, allowing Class V retail cannabis businesses, Class VI cannabis delivery services, and medical cannabis dispensaries in the CBD and C zoning districts, establishing licensing, taxation, and zoning requirements in connection therewith, and prohibiting all other classes of cannabis businesses within the geographical boundaries of the borough, has been introduced in writing by the council as a whole for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Is there a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title under Resolution 7-21-171?
Motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes, but I think that there needs to be some more explanation to everyone, the general public, as to what is it exactly that we're moving forward with. I think it needs to be explained more thoroughly, because we have heard a lot of concerns. And I also had some concerns as well, so I think a little bit more explanation should be given on this.
Councilman George?
As I listened in on the cannabis presentation, which was devoted solely to this matter last week, and as Councilman Hale from the Economic Development Committee noted, I did have some concerns, in particular with the, what was called secondhand smoke under the old public smoking concerns. I had some concerns with other matters as well, which have been addressed in the draft of the ordinance. I believe that all information, and more information that the public can get, the better. However, it does come at a time when the Borough Council needs to lead as well, and we need to make some decisions one way or another as to whether we permit this, not permit it, or whether we limit it. As everyone knows, there were six classes of this, in legalization of cannabis, including growing, manufacturing, then this wholesale distribution as well, which are not a fit in Highland Park, and were discussed at great length. Even though the industry itself, as is being done in Japan, is recognizing the value of using high-rise hydroponics, which tends to make the, when you think of growing, you think of huge 10-acre tracts. But in fact, the technology is rapidly advancing in agriculture generally, not just in marijuana. I think that the Borough Council needs to lead and take this up on second reading and listen to the public on August 3rd, as well as, should there be another presentation, should there be the ability to discuss this even further on various social media, so be it. But I vote yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Ed. I enthusiastically vote yes, and I just wanted to echo what Council President George said, and maybe Councilwoman Kim Cho Han can weigh in too, because we're on the Economic Development Committee. Councilmember Hale is not here today, but he chairs that committee. But yeah, we are, we are proceeding to adopt an ordinance that allows for retail and delivery service, and we're going to continue to look at onsite consumption, which we can add at a future date. But currently in New Jersey, I believe only Atlantic City and Jersey City have adopted onsite consumption, and largely because towns are just figuring out how to implement that. But it's certainly not something that, that we're ruling out, and we can, we can continue to explore that moving forward. But enthusiastically, yes, for all the reasons stated, and yes.
Excuse me, Council President, I think Borough
Excuse me, Council President. I think that Rowatron had his hand raised in my mind.
Again, I was, we're going to recognize.
Oh, I'm sorry.
After all, council comments.
Oh, sorry.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
And, Council, unless you need to jump in for one of the probably many comments that you might have for me.
No, Mr. President, I just wanted to indicate that the public hearing on this ordinance is a special meeting on August seventeenth, not the third. That's.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Um, yes, and all the things that Councilman Hirsch and all the other council colleagues had mentioned, I do sit on economic development with both Matt Hirsch, Matt Hirsch and Matt Hale. And we've discussed onsite consumption lounges as well, and looking to, for us to really be different than the other towns and make Highland Park basically attractable when it comes to this cannabis market. We, we, I know there's concerns with residents and the, I guess, the attorney from David had other concerns as well, too, that we're not going to make, we're not going to really make as much as we're thinking we are. But if we don't do it, we don't try, it's going to go right to New Brunswick and Edison, as they continue to vote yes on more categories than we are. So we really need to, we really need to lead, like Council President George said, and really find another revenue for the borough. And definitely, yes.
All right. The motion carries then. And as Council has said, there will be a special meeting for second reading on the cannabis ordinance only on August seventeenth, at which time we will hear comments from the public in the public hearing on that matter. That brings us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items under ordinance nine twenty are ordinarily considered as relatively routine and can be voted upon in a group. Are there any council members who wish to remove any matter from the consent agenda to be considered separately? Are there any members of council who wish to table any matters on the consent agenda for later consideration? All right, then, I would ask for a motion to adopt the following matters on the consent agenda fourteen A, to award a bid for emergency repairs to water and sewer and collection system, fourteen B, for its support of the Medicare for All Act of twenty nineteen, and specific to the Pandemic and Healthcare Emergency Guarantee Act, fourteen C, to execute solid waste disposal agreement with MCUA, fourteen D, to approve combination of general improvement and water and sewer utility bonds, fourteen E, to amend the salary resolution, annual salary resolution, fourteen F, to approve the acceptance of state funds and authorize the Borough of Highland Park to participate in the grants program administered by the Department of Law and Public Safety, fourteen G, to approve replacement of the HVAC compressor at the police department, fourteen H, to award the bid for the twenty-twenty DOT road improvements grant, as I read out before, fourteen I, resolution to authorize submission of a grant application with NJDOT for North Fourth Avenue, Johnson Street, and Montgomery, fourteen J, to award full twenty-twenty-one street tree planting project, fourteen K, to approve taxi operators, fourteen L, to apply for transportation electrification grants from the NJDOT, I'm sorry, NJDEP, that's round two, electric charging, fourteen M, to authorize extension of the grace period for third-quarter taxes, and fourteen N for the bills list. May I have a motion? So moved? There is a second.
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 Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Thank you to our revolution and everybody for their advocacy for the Medicare for All resolution. Let's keep that momentum going. And just a special shout out to Seth Sixth. I'm sure that you're very happy today, as I would be, too.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and I also like to thank Councilwoman Canavera and the Board of Health for working on this resolution, as well. I know they've been working on this for a long time. They've had many liaisons, and Councilwoman Canavera finally got us to approve it. So thanks.
Thank you. Next, the resolution requiring a separate reading is fifteen A, resolution seven dash twenty-one dash one eighty-seven. It's a chapter one fifty-nine resolution for the body worn camera grants program for the police department. I may have a motion.
Motion? Yay.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes, I'm excited about this, and brings about more transparency, as our police officers go ahead and do their daily duties. I'm glad that we're getting the strength going through it.
Councilman George?
Again, I would like to thank Elsie for her work with the police department to write up this grant and get it done. It is also an example, and one of the rare situations where the state mandates something, but then helps municipalities to fund it as well. This is a grant to fund body worn cameras. I know that the chief will certainly welcome the transparency that it brings, and the administrator will welcome the funding provided by the state to do that. I vote yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, I love it when public safety applies for grants.
Yes, absolutely. Motion passes. Thank you all. Next, on the agenda appointments, we have no appointments tonight. That brings us to the second public participation of tonight's meeting. Again, I would announce that there are three minutes per speaker. This is not limited to the items on the agenda. It could be on any subject, which, of course, subject to our rules of decorum. It's a subject to a nine, nine P M. conclusion. It looks like approximately eight P M. at the present time. Each speaker has three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a thirty-second warning and then indicate when three minutes are up. The session will wrap up at nine P M. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing the star nine symbol on your phone, which is asterisk nine on your keypad, or select the raise hand button in this application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as your address for the record, and if you'd like to speak. But now is the time to raise your hand. And Madam Administrator, would you please announce our first speaker, if there are any?
Sure thing. Looks like first up is Joyce Gregus. I'm going to have to promote you to a panelist position, which I caution you will mean your camera may flicker on momentarily. So I'm giving you a moment to ready yourself. I will endeavor to shut off your camera as quickly as I can. Again, Joyce Gregus, please state your name and address for the record. Looks like she handled her own video. So go right ahead. You need to unmute yourself. Ms. Gregus, you need to unmute yourself to speak? Alrighty.
Okay, I had unmute myself. I'm sorry.
There we go.
Joyce Gregus, two ninety-three Crowells Road, Highland Park, New Jersey. I just want to tell you, I've lived here for fifty years, and I think that by putting these, I don't know what you call it, weed dispensaries, pot stores in town, it's going to change the whole dynamics of the whole area. I would like you to keep it the way that it is, and hope that if they, whatever they need, which I'm not against, they can go to another town to purchase it. Otherwise, thank you very much for everything that you do for us, and the fireworks were great last night. And hi, Tara. Tara's my neighbor. So anyway, thank you very much again. Weed stores, uh-uh. No, 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 no. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
All right. Next up is Mark Stein. State your name and address.
Hi, my name is Dr. Mark Stein, at three twenty-eight Magnolia Street. I have to acknowledge that I've not been to a lot of these town meetings or to the Zoom meetings, and so, you know, wanted to make a comment about the cannabis. You know, I would say that certainly listening to the meeting tonight, a few things jumped out at me. People spoke about universal healthcare, scooters, day camps, mental health, library use. It's hard for me to reconcile all these really positive aspects of the town with cannabis. Scooters and cannabis don't really mix. Mental health, there is not a single study out there suggesting that cannabis is beneficial for mental health, is clearly associated with psychosis in adults, in adults, increased risk of testicular cancer, which can really be devastating. You know, camps, making this a town that's friendly for children. How does that, you know, and all this that we encourage, doesn't really reconcile with having a town that's sort of, you know, a destination for marijuana use. And, you know, libraries, really positive use of our town resources. Would love to see more of that and more communal activities. And so while I do recognize the economic benefits, I think that there's another way of looking at it, to make our town a family-friendly destination, where people would really want to move here, because it is a town that is, you know, potentially marijuana-free, that's taken a different approach. And so I think that's an alternative and a slightly different way of looking at this, and would encourage everybody to think about it from a slightly different perspective, and see if we can really build on what makes our town great. Thank you.
All right. Oh, and I should have said at the top, we currently have twenty-five attendees, and I have four remaining hands up at this point, Council President slash acting mayor.
Thank you.
It looks like Carl Prey is back. Please just let us know if he didn't back Carl Prey and your ordinance for the record.
I, it's not Carl, it's Mary. And I asked some questions, and I'd really like to have some answers about how the borough is bonding for six point three million dollars, and what we're bonding for. And I'd also like to know who is responsible if someone is hit and killed by a, by an electric scooter. Where, whose responsibility is that? I just feel like you are, are, you know, going for, you're not really thinking about what the town is going to, what's going to happen in this town with all of this. So I haven't paid much attention to the cannabis thing, but Mary Botiano made some very good comments about this. And I would like to have, I would also like to hear from all of you about what you think about redevelopment. We live in a one-party town. We do not have any dissent. You always vote affirmative, or you abstain. And I think that is really a big problem in a town like Highland Park, where people expect more. So, okay, that's, that's all I have to say. But I would really like some answers to the questions that I ask. You, we ask questions, and you just say, next person, and that just really doesn't work in Highland Park, I don't think. So thank you for allowing me to speak a second time.
Mary, you should email us and ask what we think. That's all, I mean, that's all I want to say about that.
Madam Administrator, just for clarification, the bonding that Ms. Prey was talking about, it's my understanding that all that is, is consolidating various bonds into one, as opposed, we're not spending those, those bonds, I understand it. We're simply consolidating authorized bonding capacity. Is that correct?
No, it's not quite correct. What we're doing is, we're trying to, and I, this was run through the Finance Committee, but we basically are targeting this fall for a bond sale. We think, we've been advised by our bond counsel, and we've brought in Phoenix Advisors as a financial advisor to us right now. Due to current trends, the rates are good, and they still seem to be good. And we have, we've been carrying a lot of debt through notes that we want to permanently finance. So what we're talking about are general capital and water and sewer debt that's already been authorized by council by a previous ordinances, that we are now grouping together to go out to the bond market to permanently finance. So that's, so it's a kind of yes and kind of no answer to your questions, but I think it's, I think it's just laid out the way I think about it. And so, and to the question about the details, if you open up the actual agenda and go to the back where the resolution is, it clearly states what ordinance number of description and the amount that's included in the debt that we will be permanently financing. So it's all right there in the packet, and very clear it has to be. That's, you know, we're following our auditor and bond counsel on this one. So, so that's what, so in there are things that council will recognize, having voted on previously, and some goes back even further than some of the current membership. So we're basically, we've been carrying the notes on a temporary basis for a number of years, and it's time to permanently finance.
Thank you for the comment. When I read through the bonding ordinance, that's kind of the impression I got, and it looked like we were assembling them together to try and save ourselves.
Yeah, but it's, I guess, I wasn't quite sure what you meant, so I just said it my way, but, but yeah.
As well as the significant sales on the, on the current market. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's all detailed in the resolution seven twenty-one one seventy-five.
And also, with regard to redevelopment, is there a meeting, there's a redevelopment meeting coming up?
There's a redevelopment meeting coming up next, this coming up Tuesday, July thirteenth. And so I'd encourage everybody who wants to hear more and engage on that to also attend that meeting as well.
So that would be the time to raise the general questions that Ms. Prey has talked about.
And we'll be posting our agenda by the end of the week.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm sorry for interrupting. There are other speakers, I see.
Next, it looks like Angelo. Angelo, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Angelo Boti on seven oh nine Madison Avenue, Highland Park. I wanted to comment on the resolution to pass this cannabis thing. I, I'm speaking on behalf of, you know, the student body in this town. I just recently graduated from the high school, and it's a, it's, we have a nice school here, but, I mean, it's a hot box, right? Everybody is, has done something with this thing. And by legalizing this thing, you're not really making it have, it's not, you're kind of enabling it, you know what I'm saying? And the police already have enough of an issue with drugs in this town, I think. And by putting a pot shop on a corner next to where, you know, a couple of kids live, it's not helping, in my opinion. I know everything passes in this town, but if this does pass, I think it should be jacked full of safety precaution and things like awareness for students, and you have to make the public schools aware of teaching things that still, you have to teach kids that this stuff is still bad, like, it's no good. And by passing this, it's kind of doing the opposite, in my opinion. But thank you.
It looks like Michelle McFadden-Dinacola is returning. Michelle, I'm once again promoting you to be panelist. Ready thyself. All right. Now you need to unmute yourself to confirm it to, there you go.
Okay, thank you so much. Two things real quick. On the cannabis issue, moving forward on this issue, I would like for us, as a community, to keep front and center in any decision or discussion, the racial disparities that have been historically a problem concerning cannabis and profiting from it. So we're turning this into a profitable business, which is legal, but it's always been a profitable business. But the reason it was made illegal was frankly, for. But the reason it was made illegal was frankly for racist reasons. And that's not my opinion, that is a fact. So yeah, I mean, I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're keeping that front and center in any discussion. If there is any kind of profit to be made or any benefit, I think that it, it just makes perfect sense for that benefit to go to the Black American community who have suffered the greatest harm in this type of Schedule I drug that was never really supposed to be a Schedule I drug. It's kind of ridiculous. And the other argument that I'd like to make is that the cannabis issue that is, you know, raised and everyone's commenting on, sounds a lot to me like the same arguments that were made against alcohol during prohibition. Having a hard time understanding how it's any different. In a lot of ways, I think that alcohol is far more disturbing. It's, it's everywhere in, in the nation and it does more damage to the human body as I understand the science and the biology. So I, I don't mean to sound like I promote it. I am a school board member, but I'm not representing the school board in any way. I would just like us to kind of take a little bit of a step back when we talk about this issue as a health concern. It is a health concern just as much as cigarettes and alcohol. So I appreciate your time and your effort on this. Thank you so much and I'm done for the night.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, next I see Harold Sacrowitz. State your name and address, please.
Harold Sacrowitz, 617 South Fifth Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, before I add my real question, isn't the planning board meeting on the redevelopment thing on Thursday? Or is that, is that wrong?
May I respond? The, the planning board does have a meeting on Thursday evening. I believe that, I did not see the agenda, but it's my understanding that the resolution regarding our redevelopment plan should be on for that evening. But you'd have to double check the agenda, which should have been posted probably today.
Okay, so let me just make two points and two, two things came up at the last planning board redevelopment thing that surprised me and I had never, I had not heard that before. Since these presentations began like six months ago, the festival street seemed to be the centerpiece of that, that presentation. The planners compared it to great things that were done in Denver, South Bend. And it was the one and only specific feature of the plan that you could see might actually bring residents to the avenue. And I say residents to the avenue, those are us that don't live on the avenue right now. And then all of a sudden, that festival street is, is no longer part of the, part of the plan. The second thing that concerned me is the parking deck, the financing of the parking deck. I guess I had thought that all the developers would be getting together and we would have them pay for the parking deck because they'd be using the parking. But at that meeting, Mr. Baumann sort of implied that the borough would be paying a significant portion of the money for the parking deck. He said that we should think of it, of, think of it as an investment. Now, and he even compared it to like education being an investment. Well, okay, that's okay, but the word investment doesn't,
Thirty seconds.
The word investment doesn't guarantee success. And usually if somebody asks you to make an investment, they will give you more details than we've been getting so far. So if you're going to be meeting again, I think these are things that you really have to think about because this has been a big change from the very early presentation. Thanks.
It looks like Shelley Sal is up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Shelley Sal. I live at 366 North Fourth Avenue in Highland Park. I, I apologize if I'm bringing up something that was brought up before I came in late. I read through briefly the ordinance that was brought up tonight about the cannabis licensure. And am I correct that if there is going to be a retailer, that they can set aside an adjacent enclosed area for consumption? Whether it be smoke or smoking, you know, all different variations. But there is no room or will not be any licensure or approval of an outdoor space. Is that correct?
Council President, may I, may I respond?
I would like to, by the way, add a couple more things. Do you want me to add them before you respond?
No, no, Shelley, I, I just want to say I misspoke before. I'm, and I do apologize, there, there is on-site consumption in the, in the, in the ordinance. We had been considering moving forward without it, but it was, it was added. It was, it was, you're, you're not misreading that.
There is nothing outside, but you can, there might be space inside somewhere.
Yes, that's correct. And I'd ask the, our Borough Council, if he could do a brief explanation of that.
May I ask more after you do that, though? I don't want to miss.
Well, what I would suggest perhaps is that you finish your comments and then the time that council might spend would not count against your time.
Thank you very much.
Maybe I'd be able to raise, answer more of your questions.
Sounds great. Okay, the other part that I haven't heard about is it sounds like you all, no matter what, how many people are, you know, asking for you to opt out at this point, that that's not going to happen. It seems like a done deal. I am sorry for that, by the way. But I would like to understand in this ordinance, is there any suggestion or can we make decisions later about the potency that is being sold? I agree that there is some comparison to the alcoholic consumption. At the same time, I, and I know that, I'm not sure about the alcohol licensure, if you can't go over certain proof. There is not a whole lot of ability at this point, as far as I understand, to understand how intoxicated, if you want to put in quotes, somebody is with cannabis as opposed to the alcohol level. So we're still in gray zones here and I would, please feel that way too, or notice. So my concern is the, is the potency.
Okay, we reached time, Ms. Sal. What I would suggest is we are, since we have a special meeting devoted only to the second reading and public comment on the cannabis, that some of those questions, especially the more, the more far-reaching questions about potency and who can regulate that, might be more appropriate then. But I would ask council, if you could respond to her question and was also clarified by Councilman Hirsch about the addition of the indoor consumption piece and perhaps explain that a bit more.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd be happy to. The ordinance that was introduced this evening follows the language in the state or statute that was adopted in February to permit retail cannabis operations. So you are permitted under the regulation in our ordinance to have a designated cannabis consumption area, either immediately in the retail premise or immediately adjacent. There's no outside smoking, there's no outside ingesting of the cannabis that's permitted. If you do have one of these facilities, the ordinance goes into great detail about how the air has to be filtered, how the air cannot escape when it's being treated to any of the adjacent properties or to the right-of-way. So there is permission to do so within the or, or within an adjacent facility. The cannabis operator can only have one cannabis area that can be utilized for consumption. But there are some pretty strict standards in the ordinance which would regulate what could be done in the cannabis consumption area.
Thank you, council. And again, we'll have the, we do have the special meeting on August 17th solely devoted to the cannabis ordinance with a public session for all speakers. Madam Administrator, the next speaker.
Looks like Botian is back again. I will, oops, hold on. Here we go, please state your name and address.
Hi, Mary Botiano, 709 Madison. And I just wanted to finish the comments that I was making earlier this evening regarding the, some of the items on the proposed ordinance. And yet, one of the other items that is on here is that it makes it clear the borough is willing to completely leave open the idea of bringing in any other type of cannabis businesses. And that would include a lot of what goes on in the background that a lot of the public just is not aware of. For example, you know, the mayor's office referred a weed testing laboratory to a vacancy above a pediatrician's office and within very close proximity to the upcoming girls' private school. So these are the types of things that the public needs to be aware are swirling around in the background of an ordinance like this and that are captured in one sentence that nobody is aware of. These are extremely serious issues and it's just, again, an example of the amount of, you know, short-sightedness and really the amount of, you know, irresponsibility that is associated with moving so quickly on all this. You know, even one of our councilmen tonight was unclear whether consumption was in or not. Yes, you wrote it in. Okay, this is, these are very complex issues and you need to be, you can't even keep track of them. Please do not impose the population of all these businesses on the town. The other thing I want to make sure folks realize is that August 17th is going to come up within a matter of days before the town has to have an ordinance in place. At this point, if you're planning on August 17th to be the second reading and second public period of comment, you don't even have the backup plan of keeping us out of it at this point if it's needed. So I would respectfully suggest that we also get a, an ordinance side-by-side written out now that keeps us out of everything. Because the town needs to realize, if you don't have an ordinance approved in place, you are leaving the town open for everything to come in. Even what you are claiming you don't want. And frankly, you're leaving your, the ordinance wide open to bring in anything. So please, let's do the opt-out, let's be smart. Please table this. August 17th is ridiculous to think that this will be enough time to solve everything. Thank you so much.
I misspoke, Mary. I don't like being used as an example for this, for your prohibitionist argument.
Tell me, are there any more speakers?
I see one last hand up, it looks like Tatiana. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'm Tatiana Galfand, 118 North Fifth Avenue. I want to talk also about cannabis issue. I, I'm not like deep into that thing. All I knew until like the recent ordinance was that my daughter went to two schools here and they had this dare program and marijuana was not a good thing and it was not good for your health. It was not good to drive. It was not good for your learning abilities. And suddenly, I mean, I have nothing against legalizing marijuana, it's kind of the fact. And it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's okay. It's a different issue to have it legalized or to be promoting it in your particular town and showing the example of this to, to kids around that, yeah, this is okay, just like, you know, it has strawberry flavor, vanilla flavor, okay, go and get it, you know? So this is my concern because nothing has changed in regards to like health, effect on health and driving and learning. I think we, we should, I mean, I understand the town wants to make money, but maybe we, we can find some ways to make money without sacrificing our safety and learning of our kids and health and all the other issues that people mentioned here. And maybe we should be promoting something to improve health and, and, you know, physical activity and something like really, you know, it's, it's like, I'm not deep into that issue, so just kind of a thought. And the second, so when I learned about this and also from today's comments, I, I really support the question, who will actually pay? You will be making some money, but who will pay for all the troubles that this might cause? And are the residents in charge to pay for the lawsuits? I mean, if most of our, I mean, if so many people are against, why, it will be on us. So I would like to have some clarification as others, others mentioned. Also, what's disturbing that it seems there will be really no reverse in this decision. What I read is really seems like,
Thirty seconds.
Okay, after five years, we cannot go back. And again, as was mentioned, in other towns, people or states, people are trying to go back, it's not that easy. So my concern is August 17th is summertime, not many people are present, not many go to the meetings. Just listening for three minutes of like people and then voting yes doesn't sound like taking the public opinion into account. Why don't you make like a vote, you know, for each resident to have an opportunity to vote? Thank you.
That appears to be our final speaker.
We, can, can we respond to some of the claims that have been, that have been mentioned? Council President?
If you wish briefly, but remember there is a special meeting on the 17th and at that time, I believe all of us will probably have extended comments and recitations. But if you want to be brief on it, yes, please.
No, that's fair. I, I, and I don't want to be defensive because I don't want anybody in the public, though, to think that, you know, we're doing this for dollar sign because dollar signs are popping up in our eyes or that, you know, we are, you know, looking to have some free-for-all reefer party, you know, here at Borough Hall. This is a justice issue, you know, anybody following the, the track of this, you know, of this, of this landmark bill through the state legislature and its eventual signing. And the governor that actually ran on this issue and won by wide margins. And then there was a referendum where Highland Parkers voted 70% to 30% in favor of legalizing adult-use recreational marijuana. I just want to make that very clear that this is a new industry in the state. Some towns are opting out, but by and large, towns are not opting out because it is a, because it's, it's a new industry in the state. There's a justice component of, of, of this. You know, we have decades, the, the, the prohibition on, on, on recreational marijuana has resulted in, in profound and, and irreversible levels of incarceration of, of, of Black and Brown communities. You know, it's, it's, this is righting a wrong. I mean, this, this, this really is. Are we comfortable that, that, that a big industry, you know, that, that a big cannabis industry is coming in and kind of dictating the, the contours of what, you know, of, of, of what we will be able to buy at the stores? No, no, I, I mean, and that's, and that's, and it sounds like you all are, you know, probably in a good place to argue for, for, for home grow. And that, and that's a, and that's a legitimate advocacy point. But, you know, prohibition hasn't worked, you know, and marijuana is mainstream and widespread. And I'm just going to, you know, point to that this is adult, adult use, this is 21 and over. So while I respect that, you know, somebody comes on and speaks for the student body, you probably shouldn't speak for the student body or any large group of, of, of people. But, you know, minors are acquiring marijuana illegally from suspect sources with suspect ingredients. And that's where the danger really comes into play. Prohibition wastes public resources. And so we, and we do talk about revenue. And so we, and we do talk about revenue and we can talk about what we can do with the revenue. We can talk about education. We can talk about, we, we can talk about addressing some of the justice issues, you know, in, in, in our communities. Marijuana offender, arresting marijuana offenders prevents police from focusing on other crime. It's, it, 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 it just goes on and on and on. And we really have to change the mindset that cannabis is somehow going to degrade our community when there are liquor stores literally within 1,000 feet of our K-1 primary school. You know, and, and, and as, and as, and as one of the commentators said before, alcohol is by far more damaging than, than, than cannabis. It's far safer than alcohol. And it's consistently concluded that marijuana is less toxic than alcohol and it has less potential for addiction. And it's likely, and it's likely to contribute to, and it's less likely to contribute to serious medical problems. The CDC says that more than 30,000 alcohol-induced deaths, that there are more than 30,000 alcohol deaths per year, including more than 2,000 from acute overdose. It reports zero, zero marijuana-induced deaths each year. And there has never been a verified marijuana overdose death in history, history. So when we look at history, we can see that the people who have been negatively impacted by these prohibitionist laws. But we have to look forward. We have to look forward. It is legal in the state. It has been voted on twice statewide when we elected this governor. And then it was voted on in a referendum because they, because the legislature, I guess in its wisdom, was very careful to make sure that this is what people wanted. And that's why we're discussing this today.
Thank you. All right, again, I was going to interrupt. We usually take a five-minute or ask if we want a five-minute recess. We do have some work session items tonight, if you want to take a five-minute recess. It's 8:33. Is there any consensus on the recess from our council members?
Phil, I think Tara had to take that break. She texted me. She needed to step away, so.
All right, why don't we all step back at, at 8:40 for the work session and hopefully we wrap up by nine?
Hi, Terry.
Cork is back as well.
Hello.
Hello.
I know you're probably saying something bad about me, Terry, because you're still on mute.
Sorry, guys.
No, it's like a really good joke and everybody missed. Oh, well, sorry. Trust me, it was hilarious.
Yeah, but as I'll tell you, we learned to read lips after a while doing this.
No, I was saying, I'm glad Joan's internet is holding. That's all I said.
Oh, my gosh.
I just said it and it started to storm. I just jinxed it.
And Elsie's back and just Stephanie.
Just Stephanie.
Welcome back, Elsie. Ed and Steph.
Oh, I'm chatting away. I'm going, we finally got the rain coming down and I realized I was on mute.
Yeah, it's starting again. I can hear it. The first clap of thunder just chased all my cats out.
My one cat and dog ran under the bed. The other cat ran to the window.
This one couldn't care less. She's still asleep. The other one is under the bed. Well, let's give Stephanie another minute before we start. Hmm. I wonder if.
Stephanie, are you there? I just forgot to put camera on.
I'm just wondering if she maybe had a disconnect or something because of the storm blowing in.
I can see her name still on the screen.
Yeah, I can see, I can see your name on the screen.
I'm going to send her a real quick text.
There we are.
Oh, here she is.
Now, we were worried about the thunderstorm knocking you out as it's blowing through again. Okay, that brings us to the work session items with no formal action to be taken on these matters. These are matters for discussion and consideration by the borough for possible future action or just as an update on information that we need. The first matter is revisions to the RGEA, which is the Renewable Government Energy Aggregation Ordinance that we already have in place, just for familiarity. This is our program where we have a consultant who can go out to bid on, on energy that we would obtain from sustainable sources. Wind, solar, water, and so on. We have this ordinance in place for a number of years. We have Gable Associates was our chosen consultant in this matter to advise us and also to put the bids out. One of the things that came up in some of the rounds is we found that we were not able to get bids for reasonably proportionate sustainable energy that would beat PSENG's rates, which is required in the ordinance. Sustainable Highland Park and the Environmental Commission have been considering this for a while. Sustainable has, has taken the lead and advocating in favor of amending the ordinance to allow us a greater flexibility in being able to obtain energy from sustainable sources, which members of the public could then opt out of if they wanted to stay with PSENG. Very simply, all this ordinance amendment seeks to do, and I'll allow Terry or Ed to jump in for any clarification that you might want, but at its simplest, this simply changes the formula to say it has to beat PSENG to say that it could equal PSENG, which we think would make a substantial difference in that. Other than that, if there are any clarifying explanations, Terry, I know that you'll have some. Ed, you can feel free to join in to clarify with people. But one of the big things we think that will enable us to do is be, is to reach a greater plurality with neighboring towns to go out for a bigger bulk bid, which gives us a better chance of getting sustainable energy in town.
The only thing I'd add to that, Phil, and first it's an apology. When I uploaded the revised version for your consideration in this work session, it eliminated all the track changes. So I was like, oh, they're not going to be able to figure out, you know, where the shifts are. So I, after the meeting, I'll circulate the word version that you'll be able to see exactly where we did some wordsmithing. And I think one of the areas was the PSENG pricing issue. It basically gives us a little more flexibility because there's also some issues, as Gable Associates pointed out, with how you compare apples and apples because the rates do fluctuate throughout the year. And so how do you average that out? So it gives council a little more flexibility to award if it feels and is confident that it's a comparable rate to that of PSENG without saying it absolutely must beat PSENG. So that's completely correct. The other thing that I'd point out, and this is something both Sustainable and Food and Water Watch have been pushing to include some stronger language with regard to goals for achieving renewable energy. So we did include a goal of achieving 100% renewable by 2030. We did not include specific benchmarks by year because we realized how difficult it was even to get bids that were even things that we could consider. So that is not in here, but we at least articulated some language with respect to a goal about reaching 2030 a renewable, 100% renewable at 2030. And the last kind of change of any significance by my estimation was that we also updated the language to reflect what we did in the last bid, which was following Sustainable Jersey's minimum standard guidance with regard to the energy portfolio for which we would be willing to award. So while it wasn't our bid package, it wasn't in our ordinance and Sustainable brought up. Well, what if everybody disappears on the next council and the next administrator is running this program? We want to see those specific criteria articulated, which basically is that we wanted to have at least 10% above the prevailing New Jersey renewable portfolio standard, which is the Sustainable Jersey requirement, which we were intending to meet. However, our ordinance didn't include that. So that's, I think those are the three main areas. And I will circulate the track change version just so that, you know, if there's a general comfort with this, if it moves forward, you know, you'll have the ability to kind of see where the, where the edits were.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions about the ordinance or the recommended changes?
And again, we are just monitoring market conditions at this point, you know, to see when it might be good to jump in. So for now, it seems like this is a good time to go ahead with introduction while it doesn't seem like the conditions are conducive. So.
Yeah, that's one thing that council knows. There is no set deadline to, to, that we have to go out to bid or, you know, it is market-driven. That's why we, you know, we did not succeed in the first round bids. The, the market wasn't there, wasn't there to give our residents a break, but also start to encourage nationally the, the growth of sustainable energy to put out on the grid for towns like us to go out and bid on. But, you know, understand it is, we are, our consultant monitors to determine if and when it's appropriate. And what we hope is this, this change will allow us to induce municipal, you know, municipalities are looking at the same way to, to, you know, group our bids together. So we have a little more bidding power on the market. Any other questions? We move on to the one-inch meter ordinance, water ordinance amendment. Terry?
It's a pretty straightforward amendment. We discussed it a couple of times at the Public Works Committee, as you know, Phil, and maybe it was, I'm not sure who the other members are. But the, the gist of it is, right now, the borough.
Council members, Hirsch and Canavero.
Thank you. I just took a, I, I knew it, but I've got, I've got a week in the days when I thought about. The, the, the idea is our current ordinance reads the borough's responsible for replacement, periodic replacement of three-quarter and five-eighths inch meters. And the proposal is that we also include one-inch meters in our ordinance. Where, as you may be aware, we're about to go out and replace all the borough-owned meters. So this would essentially mean these one-inch meters would become our responsibility moving forward. We would like to include them in the forthcoming meter replacement program. But in order to do so, we need to update the ordinance. We're talking about another 200 to 250 meters. They're essentially, see, most of, I would say, if I had to characterize them, most of them are single-family homes that had no idea that they didn't have three-quarters or five-inch inch meters. That was the borough's responsibility. So we'd be looking to do a simple amendment. There will probably be some other ordinance amendments down the pipeline as we get up and running with Middlesex Water on a bunch of other initiatives. But this one is a pretty simple edit to basically expand to our, our responsibility to the one-inch meters. I believe we have the funding through the ordinance that will cover that additional cost. We're now evaluating the meter, the bids we got in for the different, for the meter replacement program. I'm not sure if we're going to award or not. We're still evaluating what we received. But that said, we really would like to include those. When we included pricing for one-inch meters with no obligation to purchase, just in the hope that the council will be agreeable to an ordinance change such as this. So that's what, that's basically all.
Yeah, just to follow up a little bit on that. Terry, as, as you and I may know, having been involved with the, the water, water and sewer issues in, in, in town for a number of years now, this is one of the recommendations that Middlesex Water had. that Middlesex Water had made even before they became our water infrastructure administrators. And including the one-inch meters from the five-eighths up to one inch is one of the recommendations. They had to make more standardization in administering the system, bringing all of these meters up to speed, making them all the most efficient and electronically available. So this is another follow-up along our long and slow trail for infrastructure improvement. It's one of the nuts and bolts tasks that we have to take on from time to time. But as I say, you know, sometimes, sometimes getting dirty, because this is all underground stuff and all old piping and, you know, and old infrastructure is one of the bigger improvements that we can make in town. So we are following up, and it has been discussed a number of times in Public Works, also in our utility meetings since we started them last year at this time in July. It's been in part in reports in almost every monthly report that we do. And Terry and I have our meeting with the water utility coordinators. So it is a small step, but it's certainly a major improvement in it. So when the ordinance comes forward, I think there'll be more technical information available. This is just to let you know, you know, what it entails and how it's going to work. Again, it targets about 250 of the meters that we have that are right now left off of our present ordinance.
And just to be clear, we're not talking about greater than one inch, mainly due to budgetary constraints to do so. We don't, you'd have to think about that. I mean, it's something to think about in the future. But the one-inch meters were manageable budgetarily and made sense, because they also, the types of users were very similar to the five-eighths and three-quarter inch. They were the kind of more of the homeowners.
It's a good, it's a good, it's a good match with me to report.
We're on board.
Great, thank you.
I'll keep talking about it, Matt. I'm getting a.
Nope, nope.
I can go on. I can talk about the sewers all night.
All right.
But the next matter is the Neighborhood Preservation Program for Woodbridge Avenue.
Oh, Stephanie was saying.
I'm sorry, Steph.
So the one-inch meters are usually the gray ones that are on the side of buildings.
No, no. Those are the remotes that you read on the outside. The meters in the basement, these are the size of the pipe that goes in to dictate the size meter. The way our ordinance reads, your home has a three-quarter or a five-eighths, probably a five-eighths. The most standard is five-eighths. Right now, if you have a one-inch meter, it's considered customer-owned. You're responsible for testing. You're responsible for replacement. It makes it very difficult for us to manage, as you can imagine, staying on top of all these meters that we don't control. So it's for that reason we want to take this initial step to bring those in.
So how, how, okay, because there was some discussion, I know some residents had concern about, I guess, the big green meters that are outside their homes and about the communication and someone just coming to replace their meter. So we're adding additional.
I think you may be thinking about PSENG. They have a meter on the outside of the home. This would be in the basement, just to be clear. It would be a big program. We'd be, we're going to be making a lot of appointments. We're going to have to get in. We're going to have to replace, but we're not trenching. We're not digging. We're not doing any of that stuff.
Okay, so we would schedule and there would be.
That's all part of that bid I was talking about. It was purchase and installation, whoever wins. And we made the option to pick one company, do one and one or the other, whatever worked out best for the borough. So just to be clear, those are, these are, we do think this will go a long way to addressing some of our, just our, just operational issues moving forward, because there are all be radio reads as opposed to having the remote on the outside that reads the basement meter. So it'll be much less manual. But that said, that it sounds like you're talking about a PSENG meter.
Okay.
I'll see.
Currently, I have the meter downstairs in my basement. And a number of years ago, we put some on the outside so it could be just remotely, like drive-by red.
Only a handful. Yeah, go ahead.
So. So the one in the basement would be removed, the green bulky one?
Maybe. I'd have to look yours up. But the bottom line is, we would, if you don't currently have a radio red, if it's one of the ones where the remote is on the outside of the house. But we're proposing replacing all of our meters that we own in the borough. So yes, everybody who currently has this, with this proposal moved forward, a one-inch meter or less size, we would be replacing over time, over probably about a one-year period.
And what would be, there would be a cost to the residents on this?
No, except, I mean, of course, the rate.
I mean, no, a direct cost. I'm not talking about.
But no, and if anything, that's why I think if I was owning a one-inch meter, I would be happy about this, because it now takes a responsibility that you may not have even known you had off your shoulders moving forward.
And it would be smaller than what's.
I can't promise you that. I'll see, I don't have the specifications. I don't want, I would like to think newer would be a little smaller, but I don't want to promise you a more aesthetic improvement in your basement.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? So the next matter is the Neighborhood Preservation Program for Woodbridge Avenue.
Yes, we were very excited to learn that we have qualified for participation to apply to the Neighborhood Preservation Program. This is run out of the Department of Community Affairs. I believe I actually, Joan explained to me, the borough had received these funds in the past, which I was not aware of. So some of you may recall. The neighbor, they basically look at a lot of criteria. The reason we're able to apply this year is they did a bunch of analyses and they looked, amongst them were census tract, demographic data, commercial challenges due to COVID was a new category they added in, et cetera. And so it looks like the Woodbridge Avenue area, and I can share a map with council, will qualify under the program. We are very excited about this. One of the tasks we'll have to do is really define our plan area, which we haven't done yet. We're, this is just early days. We just learned about this fairly recently. But from some preliminary conversations that the mayor and I have had, is looking at the commercial corridor, and it's just a matter of how big outside of that do we want to make it? And what kind of programs do you want to do? They can, it's a five-year grant up to about, I think, the first year you can have $125,000. There's, you have to have a municipal match as well as $100,000 for subsequent years if awarded. So that's a nice pot of money to really push forward some programs in place. One of the things that we're trying to think about are what the municipal match would look like and some other programs we can layer on. For example, in recent awards with the CDBG grants, we earmarked some projects on Woodbridge Avenue so that, you know, can kind of amplify this program. So I guess I'm giving you a real sketch. I'm going to also share, and I had intended to do it before the meeting, and I just lost track of it with the holiday. There was a good orientation session that the DCA ran, and I'll share the link, because you can just watch it at your convenience, where you can find, kind of, here's the overview. But it can do infrastructure improvements, you know, bike ped, you name it, streetscape, or rental rehab, housing rehab programs. It's got a wide range, but I'll just say, from the initial conversations we've been having, we're inclined to focus on kind of the commercial areas, but maybe expand the, look at the map of it so that we can layer in other borough programs for the surrounding neighborhood. So I thought everybody would be excited to hear Woodbridge Avenue in the mix, because I know that's been something I've heard over the last few years, you know. So this is a real opportunity for us, and we'll be working. Emma's going to be helping out with the grant writing, but we're also going to reach out to New Brunswick, who has a successful program, already been awarded, where they, it's New Brunswick tomorrow, as well as New Jersey Community Capital. So we're going to talk to some of those folks about what they've been doing and see what we can learn. They've been working on French Street in New Brunswick. So there's some comparable, because you've got a commercial corridor with some residential areas behind. So we're going to see what we can learn, but the applications do in mid-August. So we have a lot of work to do in the short run. But part of what happens in year one is a kind of a fleshing out of your plan in full. And so we'll have opportunities to engage. And one of the other areas for engagement is a steering committee comprised of businesses and residents and other stakeholders from this neighborhood. So that's something we'll be working on, and you'll have an opportunity to weigh in on as well as we move forward. So I just wanted to let you know about this really exciting prospect. And I will share that link with everybody so that you have some time to kind of look at it and get your reels turning. That's what we got there.
It's a deer.
It is a competitive program, but it really has the potential to give us a real benefit up on Woodbridge Avenue. So the next matter and the final matter on the work session is the deer management plan?
Right, and I apologize, because it's 9:02, and I do have a few slides I'd like to present, if that's okay. Hold on one second. Mainly to what I, what I did, hold on, let me make sure, before I share, make sure I have the right talking up. It's a pro movement. Let's see here. All righty, there we go. Okay. So can you guys see my Highland Park draft deer manager plan slide?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this the same as what you sent us, Terry?
This is, I didn't send you the slide. I sent you guys the draft plan. And so what I was going to do is walk through some key provisions now that this outline follows that plan pretty close.
So this is a summary presentation?
This is a summary, just for your, for your benefit. I mean, I won't read every word on it to try to keep things moving and allow you guys some time to discuss. But essentially, this is just a snapshot of kind of how we got to this point. And I'll just kind of start more at the end of the timeline than at the beginning. But essentially, I believe last fall, I believe October, council passed a resolution authorizing the creation of a draft plan for your review, which is basically the draft plan that I shared with you prior to the meeting. And that's what I'm going to give you an outline here of. But I don't have to go through kind of the timeline, but just, it's there if you, if you want it. And I can send you these slides as well. And I'll go short, but I'm trying to mirror the plan for the benefit of the public as well. So we talked a little bit about whitetail deer in New Jersey. Deer habitat likes fringe habitat, like living on the suburban fringe where they can forage. And they have a pretty unending appetite for greenery. They will pretty much eat anything at any point. And as we've discussed in previous meetings, that higher deer densities can lead to damage of native ecosystems. And we've cited in the plans, different surveys done in the state, where we are showing deer numbers five to 10 times greater than recommended levels in the state. And then bringing us to Highland Park, these are not unfamiliar pictures to those of you. There are whitetail deer in Highland Park. And in what we did do, as I didn't mention in the previous slide, was we commissioned the Raritan Valley Community College. Dr. Kelly surveyed areas of Donaldson and Johnson Park, the Rutgers Ecological Preserve, as well as Highland Park, to give us an assessment of kind of where we were population-wise. They cited deer density ranges from five to 20 as being kind of ecologically more balanced. And our study counted 374 deer in this four-mile area. So again, this included portions of the Ecological Preserve in Piscataway, as well as portions in Middlesex County, Johnson Park, and Donaldson Park. But just to be clear, in that overall survey area, we had about 93 deer per square mile. This was that heat map of where, of the deer in our area, based on that study. So all these things aren't, I'm not dwelling here, because I think you've all seen them before. And then we basically tried to come up with what we thought were goals and recommendations based on the comments that we heard at the various meetings that were held. The goal, number one, being minimizing damage to native plants in our meadows area and the native plant sanctuary, decreasing safety concerns related to deer vehicle accidents, reducing unwanted deer-human interactions, such as landscape and garden damage. And our recommendations, and this shouldn't be a surprise, because it was pretty explicit in the resolution authorizing the plan construction, was we're recommending one of the items we could do is a controlled doe-focused deer management program, utilizing bow hunting on this Meadows, 14-acre Meadows property. And as part of that, we would also, as a kind of a, in parallel, conduct educational and outreach programs to talk to residents about other, more specific to their properties, management options that they might have for around the house. So these are the four main components, and you all have the plan, hopefully, in front of you or can refer to it afterwards. This controlled archery, bow and arrow hunt, were these kind of things that you can do at home, kind of circle around deer-resistant planting selections, as well as deer deterrents, like sprays. We can offer some advice on that and do some more communication about that. Fencing alternatives as well, and how to navigate our own ordinances with respect to fencing. We did, another component is a no-feeding ordinance, which we did adopt last year. However, I will need the advice of the borough attorney as to whether or not we would need to amend to allow for the hunting in the Meadows property, because some baiting would be advisable to do so. And I'll talk a little bit about the specifics in a moment. And then lastly, identify some locations for some signage about, kind of cautionary signage to drivers as to, for deer crossings and so forth. So probably with the most detail, and probably where people are most interested in understanding. Again, we're talking about controlled archery, which is bow and arrow hunting. At the 14-acre Meadows property, limiting it to that area at this point. The, we were proposing that the meadows be closed when it's in operation for hunting. And it's just side noted here that in our conversations with Middlesex County, Piscataway, there are discussions of controlled hunts in those communities and various aspects as well. When, we'd be looking at Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, from dawn to a half hour after sunset. So that's following kind of state guidelines on that. They would have up to two hours, meaning the hunters would have up to two hours after sunset for retrieval of any materials, including any deer carcasses. Who, we are talking about limiting this to approved expert management hunters by invite only. And we've identified, I believe, we have at least four that are interested and willing to participate in our program. So we wouldn't be doing at this point an open call for hunters. At this point, we really want to focus on people with experience with what we're doing here. We got recommendations on these hunters from someone named Joe Paulin, who happens to be a resident, as well as works for the Rutgers Ecological Extension, and is a wildlife management expert there and does some work there. And Tony Di Nicola from White Buffalo, which is a group that does a variety of deer management work in throughout the country and does some studies. So we have some personnel there. I see, Matt, you have your hand up. Did you want to stop me, or were you just waiting to the end?
Sure, I just wanted to know. I mean, I wanted, I was interested in that hunters have been solicited already when we don't have a management plan yet, and that the council has really only had three days to kind of weigh in on this. How did?
We've been talking about that consistently. I guess, we haven't solicited, we've reached out to some hunters. We did not promise them they have a place to go. We were, frankly, wanted to inform ourselves as to how it works. We wanted to know if they'd be willing, because I guess I heard loud and clear safety concerns and wanting to make sure we were in a recreational hunting area, that, and maybe I misheard that, but that was some, something I picked up. And so that was my idea, was to go out and we solicited input from these experts. They said they knew some folks in our area that might be willing to participate. And so we reached out. I wasn't saying they're committed, and we are not committed in any way, but.
White Buffalo is something that you really do commit to.
No, no, it's not.
Extensively in the past, and I know what they're all about.
Excuse me, Matt, it's not White Buffalo. The gentleman from White Buffalo referred us to a few hunters that might be interested, who live in our area.
I just want to make sure I know what we're voting. I just want to make sure I know what we're voting on, Terry.
And you're not voting tonight?
No, I understand, I understand, but you know, that seems to be an issue, so I do.
Okay, so just to be clear, that these were experts that we learned of along the way to get advice from. They are not dictating this process in any way.
So we talked to industry folks to give us guidance on?
I guess I wouldn't, I guess I wanted to talk to folks about, alright, can I just get through my presentation? Can hear me, alright. So with regard to what kinds of rules and regulations we'd want to put in place. This is recommended, it's not, this is subject to discussion and further input. And this did, I should say, get circulated to the Public Safety Committee before it went to council. And this, we did get input there, I just want Matt to be clear on the process. The, so we would be, we have these hunter rules and regulations. So we have to be over 18 with a consistent track record of harvesting antlerless deer. Again, that's kind of another way of saying, this isn't just recreational hunting. We have an ecological management purpose that we'd be trying to achieve based on that first goal that I articulated. They'd have to have the proper insurance and so forth as articulated here. They would have to register their vehicles, let us know at least, I believe, the Friday before the week that they would be hunting, that they would be there. We have to know when they're in there, when they're leaving. And also if they do successfully hunt a deer, they would have to report those tallies to us, as well as the state, which is required by the Division of Fish and Wildlife. Just trying to think through here, some of the key questions we've heard throughout. They would have tree stands in the meadows area and they should be marked and they need to be set up in a way that don't damage the trees that they're relying on. And the hunters will be allowed to keep what they can use and anything in excess will have to be made available through hunters helping the hungry at a cost to the borough. We would pick up the charges of the butchering and the distribution to the various food groups that participate with hunters helping the hungry. The other component, I already mentioned the deer-resistant plantings and deterrents. We'll kind of do a little more work to promote the shade tree advisory committee's existing lists with regard to native shrubs and vines that are deer-resistant. Do a little more education about how fencing can be used on properties if that's an option. Although there are permitting issues and height requirements that we have to navigate, but we will help inform residents of that and educate the public about other kinds of deer repellents that may be an option for use on their properties. Again, I think I already mentioned the no-feeding ordinance may have to be amended should we move forward with the hunting component on the meadows. And lastly, with regard to road signage, the placement of deer crossing type signs. I'm not exactly sure if that's the current model that we use. I've been working with the Public Safety Team on that. But in these higher, where we've had higher conflicts with cars, we want to promote some signage there. Also, probably some social media work around that. Priority locations being River Road, where the large majority of our accidents have occurred, as well as Raritan Avenue potentially. Again, that would require DOT approval and the River Road option would require some county approval. So that's really the overview of the plan. There's a lot more detail in there. I just, I wanted to kind of sketch that out for everyone and I'm happy to answer questions. And I'll de-share just for the purpose of you guys being able to see each other.
Thank you, Terry.
Oh Phil, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a question. The one slide says that hunting will be on Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. But if you look in Appendix A, it says it's actually during the fall and winter bow season, September through February, but just to clarify.
I should have said during season, during the season.
It sounds like it's a, you know.
No, we have to follow state guidelines on hunting. And so I apologize, and it crossed my mind to say it and then I lost track, sorry about that.
But that the particular season, is it September through February or are there just blocks of time in September?
It can be, it can be straight, I believe both season is straight through if you want. We could set our own calendar, I mean, we don't, it's not all or nothing. For example, let's say there wasn't consensus to move forward at this point or what have you. If we didn't have consensus by September, but we did by January, you could move forward. You know, you just have to be within those dates. You can have, we can control within that timeframe the schedule.
One of my concerns is that, especially recently, I took a tour with the Meadows Trail Volunteers to look at the work that's being done all the way through it. And there is a high amount, and I've been down there during the week as well. There's a rather high usage during the time. Now, I know there's provisions made to, you know, communicate with the police, communicate. I know we talked about.
Signage at various locations, I should have mentioned, I apologize.
But I'm wondering whether, if there's too many closures, whether we're closing off the opportunity for people who enjoy it.
We'll say we shared it with.
It was rediscovered during the pandemic as a place where a lot of people went to just get away and get out. But, so Mike, that's one concern. Another concern is, you know, we could put signage up. You know, we can start the day with DPW or the police officer saying, you know, just a reminder, this is going on at the entrances. But there's an entrance that's used a lot informally on the Edison side by the apartments down by the river. And there's a lot of entry and exit there during the day. And that has to be taken into account. I think the biggest risk for people running into potential problems here is from that entrance by the apartments on the Edison side. So we're going to need to, to address that. Again, my other concern is that we don't restrict it so much that we're, it's just a regular hunting day and we're restricting the public from using.
Can I mention two things to that, to your points, Phil, before you call on Tara? Just so I don't lose track. So the Monday to Wednesday actually evolved after some back and forth with the Meadows Trail Group just to find out about utilization and what. And they had requested, because Saturday was initially, or Saturday? Yes, hunting is prohibited on Sundays in the state of New Jersey. So Saturdays were in the mix and they requested it be removed. And we did, for the very reason you said. So just being advised that they did weigh in on your exact point. And then we did discuss that entrance that you're referring to. And we have to know a little bit more about exactly where the line between us and Edison is. But we certainly had signage there, as well as to the old entrance to the trail in mind. And the last thing I'd mentioned that kind of relates to those two things was, I know we're not there and I know there's not comfort for this, but I will just tell you, in other areas, including the Ecological Preserve, they do allow use of the trails while hunting is going on. I know, I heard loud and clear, there was no comfort with that and that's why that is not how this plan reads. But that's something that, depending on if it moves forward and what our experiences are, it's something you could evaluate down the line as to whether or not to open it up a little bit more. They do, you know, it tends to be early morning and later in the day, you know, is when the hunters are in there. But I understand and share some of the trepidation about trying to do all of that all together at the same time. But I just wanted you to be aware that that's not, that's not a requirement the state has. That's our own requirement, that's our own imposed limitation.
Tara, I think, has a question, Terry?
I have a very big concern. I have talked to many hunters who do these hunts and they have all told me that there will more than likely be deer running around our town injured or with arrows. And they said that's more likely than not. And I have a big concern, especially because there's a lot of children living right in that area. We have a lot of apartment buildings. And like I said, I've talked to people who do these hunts and they've told me that we will have it. And that's a major, major concern for me.
Okay, did you happen to know if they were like management hunters or recreation hunters? Okay. And I will dispute that that came up in previous meetings and I said it then and I'll say it now. There's no way anybody could represent that an injured deer may, there's the possibility an injured deer could run off the property.
No, they told me that it's more of a possibility than not.
I'd like to, I appreciate our reference, but the other thing, that was one of the reasons we were looking at more of the expert management with a lot of experience was we wanted people who really knew what they were doing and had a lot of accuracy. So, but I won't dispute, I can never tell you that wouldn't happen. Matt?
Did any, did any of the experts that you consulted with have, have experience in towns of our size in hunting areas that small, that are but so dense residential areas?
I'd have to go double back and check. I believe the answer is yes, but I don't want to tell you a false. I could find out more. There was no discomfort with the 14-acre and several of them actually went in to look, but I'd have to check.
I mean, guys with bows who make money doing it are not going to have discomfort.
By the way, we wouldn't be paying them.
Oh, no, there would be no, because that was something that I understood otherwise.
No, no, they would be volunteers.
Fish and Wildlife gets the money.
Well, they, Fish and Wildlife, they have to be licensed by Fish and Wildlife to do any hunting. So certainly that is true. But to be very candid, this doesn't really help Fish and Wildlife because we're looking at potentially hunters that are already licensed in the state of New Jersey. We're not opening up a big recreation area to entice new hunters into the fold. So I don't know what other fees there might be, but that is not what we were talking about. These were individuals that we found that were willing to contribute. I don't know in the, for the long haul, if this program was to move forward, you know, how long we can keep their interest in Highland Park if this was ongoing. And we might have to open up a little more for applications. Ecological Preserve has a lot of experience that we can borrow from on selection processes and things like that. And we do reference a lot of, in the plan, a lot more of the hunting qualifications that we'd be looking for and requirements, including, you know, if we have people, we want to have a short list of people. We don't, like I said, it's not a recreation area for this purpose. And so if they really aren't coming out and trying to, you know, hunt deer on a regular basis, we would want to drop them from our list and give it to somebody else, give the opportunity to somebody else.
Are there any other questions over the plan?
So.
So, so Middlesex County and Piscataway is in discussion of having a controlled bow.
I'm not 100% sure about Piscataway, I noticed that when I was reading it and I have to, I have to help with my slides. But Middlesex County had, the parks have been looking at Johnson Park in particular and areas up kind of the river, along River Road that they own, that may or may not be in Johnson proper, that were included in our study area.
So when they were approached, what did they say about?
By approached, I think a fair way to say it is, we all said, hey, they want to be supportive of Highland Park. That was very clear. And that they are looking at, they didn't launch this program, they had a year with coronavirus like the rest of us. I think they weren't looking to do that. I could get you more information as to where that stands. But the last we checked in with the Parks Director, they were contemplating in the Johnson Park area there, some sort of controlled hunting. I just do not have any specifics to share and I don't know what their internal processes are for that. As for Piscataway, I'm not sure if it's Piscataway Township or Rutgers or Middlesex County within Piscataway. That's what I got to get clarification on in the, but we have been talking to the, people have been calling, just saying, what are you doing? And so we have heard from Piscataway with questions as we have from Edison as well.
Oh, so Edison as well?
In a casual way, not like we're doing something, I don't want to lead you on. I'm just saying, people heard we were working on it and they're like, what are you doing? And so we would.
Yeah, because Edison, the article that I sent around was talking about sterilization.
That's not what we're talking about and that's not what we talked about with them.
Well, that was in the article that was discussed at their public meeting from the organizations that we never had.
Okay, I just, I guess I didn't know we're going back that far. That we've, in my mind, ruled out the efficacy of, between costs and just frankly, it's not effective in our condition with herds that move around, they're not controlled. And I wouldn't be surprised if they learned the same thing and that's, I don't know for sure.
No, they're just not going to vote on a hunt, like Highland Park and Hunt doesn't even go together, but.
I, can I just mention one thing, Phil, I'm going to say it again. This isn't my baby, I'm not, I was instructed to put this plan together at the request of this council and I feel like I'm getting a little heat for it, I will be.
This was specifically asked for her to rule searches by the Public Safety Committee, which she did. And everyone wants the deer to be eliminated, but nobody wants the hunt to happen. And it's not like these bears are just going to walk away out of the state of New Jersey. You go to Newark, New Jersey and you see deer walking in the street. We've all seen them splattered across our highways. In every single town that you go to, something needs to be done. And there is some suggestion saying that, you know, birth control, the birth control that was tried years ago, it didn't work. There's different methods that was tried and it didn't work. So we're trying to come up with some kind of solution for people who are saying to us that something needs to be, including myself, that's saying something needs to be done. It's not about them eating up your plants, it's just everywhere, they're not afraid of you. They don't run anymore, they just stand in your way and, you know, it's a nuisance and they're a nuisance and they're a hazard. And something has to be done. So if there's any question, I think it should be geared to me because I'm Public Safety, not to Terry. Terry just did.
Well, I'm happy to answer, Sausage, I guess I was getting a vibe that it was like my thing. I just want to be very clear. And the other, the other one point I would like to, just in the interest of transparency, you know, the deer are, throughout our community, this is a very small, relatively small site. It's big for Highland Park, but a relatively small site. So it might relieve some of the deer population pressures in the south side of town, but it's not very clear. And I pretty much heard from various folks that, you know, the north side, would this address their concerns? I'm not, I'm not convinced that that's the case. I think that's why the discussions about Middlesex County Johnson Park and Ecological Preserve would be extremely helpful to alleviate some of the pressures there. But I just wanted to be very clear, it's a small piece, but it's one that we control in town.
I also want to add that when the conversation was had with both Edison and Piscataway, they are both interested in doing something with the controlling their population, but they said they don't want to lose their votes. Period. That was their bottom line, that yes, something needs to be done, but they don't want to lose their votes. And no matter which way you look at it, people are not going to be happy. But I believe that something needs to be done with the population because they, it's a nuisance to us, it's a hazard to them. I live right by the park and when you go down there in the winter time, you see them all initiated and they're walking around and they're barely walking around. So anything that's going to help to thin the herd and make it better, I think it's a good thing. I think something has to be done. And the birth control thing is not going to work, somebody called up and says, oh, we should build a bridge, build a bridge to where? They're going to go say, oh, it's a deer crossing, so let the deer cross into another town? That's not happening. Rutgers Ecological Preserve that does do a deer hunt every year, when they do their deer hunt, it helps in Piscataway, but that's done through Rutgers. But we still have that population of deer that comes across. Matt, you had a question?
Oh, no, thank you, Ms. Foster. I forgot what I was going to say. Okay, yes, I got it. I think, you know, I think I share the general concerns, you know, and I understand that, you know, our deer population has increased. I, I, I think I, you know, I think I share the general concerns, you know, uh, I, I, and I understand that, you know, our deer population has increased significantly since the time that I moved. I mean, it used to be an event in 2009 to see deer walking down the street and it's not an event anymore. It's like totally normal and they're constituents. Um, and we have to answer to the deer, uh, but it's also, um, uh, in, when we first met in 2017 or 2018 with the former police chief, Risco, it was the, the idea of a deer hunt was randomly dismissed. Um, and I understand that, you know, obviously we have different leadership and things and, and things have changed. And maybe the problem has gotten, has gotten worse, but I think I'm, what I'm having a really tough time doing is that, you know, I'm coming into this with the idea that I don't want a deer hunt, like that, that, that's not something, but I'm not dogmatic about it. So like I, I would like more kind of parochial and less anecdotal data that really shows the need. So when I was a reporter in Princeton, we have 50 mile an hour, you know, Mercer County, they have 50 mile an hour roads. There were some, it was a major public safety concern. There were bad accidents. Um, I would like to see, you know, I would really like to see kind of, you know, real data on traffic, on deer related traffic accidents. Um, and really get a, get a full feel on kind of what the public safety hazard is. Uh, you know, it, it's, I, because, you know, we can talk, you know, I, I think in the preamble of the, you know, the plan that, 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 that was sent over, you know, we talk about, um, we talk about the statewide damage, uh, when it comes to deer related accidents and the cost to agricultural crops. Um, I have some significant environmental concerns when it comes to our deer populations and, and, and eating our, you know, eating native plants and, and, and preventing trees from growing. Um, but when it comes to actually executing a, 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 a bow hunt, I think I would just like to have a better idea of what the real public safety and public health concern is. We, we know the environmental concerns, um, but I would like, I would like to know what, what the data.
That's a really fair point and we have, we did pull the motor vehicle and it's not in here and there's no reason. But I will tell you, it's not like, you're right, our roads are slower. Um, I guess if the chief is still on, he could speak to some of that. I know he pulled the data a while back and probably doesn't have it in front of him. But, um, you know, our, our accidents aren't like the 50 mile an hour kind of situations, nor as frequent as maybe you would have seen in a place like Princeton or thereabouts and where rural areas with the roads are faster. But so the, the impetus wasn't as much from the, the motor vehicle side, which made us unusual, even when I reached out to the fish and wildlife way back when, when Risco was still chief. Um, they were surprised that Highland Park called because most of the time it comes from the car accidents. That's the most often that they, they get the outreach, but the, but the, but the complaints and the concerns have raised to a point where it got assigned to me to kind of look into what our options were. So, but it's, we can certainly layer in that data because we have it. We even did a, a map initially for the purpose of fish and wildlife that showed kind of where the complaints were. And it kind of matched up with our ultimate, our Redden Valley College study. However, you know, so I went with that because it was more scientific versus kind of complaints that happened to come to the police department or through other means. But I can, I think you're right. That's not a bad idea. Although I don't really want to write it all. It's not going to move forward anyway, but, but we can certainly layer in some more Highland Park specifics. Um, as to kind of what our, our numbers looked like and, and so forth.
I, um, I actually have the report that, um, was sent around a while ago from April of 2016 to April 2018, there were four.
Yeah. It wasn't like that was, that's what I said, it was not the index here.
Yeah, there were only four and like a overall car call on like caucuses and different things were, um, 24. And this was from the police records, Curler, Mary, I mean Megan, Megan Barry.
Yeah, and I, I did a, 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 a combination of that plus, um, the ones that came through the website portal and so forth that I can also share or layer into here. But again, it, it won't show you any significant difference in terms of motor vehicle accidents. That was not the index.
Yeah, but that was.
Stephanie said there were four, um, incident that we had, and I think that was to date, that's still the, the number.
Uh, there were a few more since then and I, I know the chief pulled the numbers more recently than that date range. Um, I'd have to go back and find it, but the percentage wise, it's probably no different in terms of.
But that was in the slide, like as a supporting calls for, like that was in the slide of motor vehicle. And so.
If there was a public safety.
Will be like, geez, I mean.
There were concerns about it. I guess I'm not sure which slide you were talking about. I'm like looking now.
I, no, I agree. I mean, in the slide.
There were safety concerns about it, not necessarily safety realities. I, I, no.
Were they founded concerns or were they unfounded?
No, there are concerns because our deer are roaming through the roads. They call, but our, our streets are low, low speed relatively. So I think we have near misses or near whatevers quite a bit because we get reports of it, but actual collisions were not as many. There were the four plus whatever ones were picked up in the intervening months. So sorry if that was a misleading slide. It wasn't intended to be. Because that's why we did the deer signage. It actually came up this year from a resident saying there's deer all in the road. Are we going to put signs up? So, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't a real concern that we had heard.
So listening to the comments and what, going forward, what's the consensus of the council? I know that it, since we first started discussing it, there, there have been some, uh, changes on council. Um, what's your consensus on implementing the plan or some, you know, supplemental information that backs up the plan? Um, again, as Terry said, and I think Terry may have come on board as administrator in the week when we had our first deer hunt meeting, if I recall.
Well, I, it wasn't quite that. I, I actually had something to do with the meeting getting put together. But it was early on, you're correct.
But, but, but it has been in the works for a while. Um, what is the consensus of the council?
Well, I'm like.
Still a no.
Well, I think we need a plan. I cannot vote yes for a plan that includes hunting, especially when other surrounding towns are not going to do it. It's not going to make, Little Highland Park is not going to save the state with the hunt.
Tara said it better. Thank you. Yes, agreed.
There seems to be something of a consensus or something of an impasse then.
One of the two.
Matt, you indicated you wanted information. Was that strictly the traffic that Stephanie was able to bring up?
Yeah, yeah, yes. And if there's any new data, I mean, I mean, if there is.
There is, but it's not, it won't tell a different story.
I think, I think if we're talking, if we're, if we're looking, we, we can look at this through, through, through three, three lenses. We can look at it from a public health standpoint and when it comes to communicable, you know, ticks and stuff, we can look at it through public safety. If there's, if there's accidents and people's blood safety is at risk, or we can look at it through, through an environmental lens. And my main concern is environmental, um, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sold on, on a bow hunt.
Yeah, I, I, I have to say one, and I've spoken about this before. I think my main concern is environmental because, um, as liaison to the Meadows Trail and the plant sanctuary and, uh, up until the time when my arthritis declined to the point where I have to use a walker now. Um, I used to do my volunteer hours there. Um, and I see the damage that they do and they really, in some years they've wiped down an entire planting uh, that the volunteers put in, uh, especially when the males start to scrub velvet from their antlers, which is going to start shortly. They really tear the trees up eventually and they die pretty quickly. But I sense a consensus that, um, you know, there are concerns that we, you know, have surfaced all along uh, with the, you know, with the nature of the bow hunt, you know, we've, Tara is right. We've heard the comments about the injured, injured deer running through the neighborhoods. It is a crowded area on one side. I still remain very, very concerned about the Edison side. The bigger entry problem is from that side and I don't, I don't want to characterize anybody, but there are people that are just there for fun. Or they may be riding their bicycles and we know that they've snuck a dirt bike in every once in a while. And we can't disparage the hunters and say, well, they're just not going to notice. But there are too many accident stories. Um, and I, I want to see that shored up. We can't, so on our side, our people are going to respect the side. They're going to say, I'm just not going to go in right now. I don't like it, but I'm not going to go there. But that's why I'm saying, I, I think the consensus at this point is a little more thought on this is, is that correct?
When you're done, I, I had a couple of clarifying questions when you could, ready.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm putting the question out there.
Well, can I, I guess I wasn't sure with the environmental point that I heard emerging. We had a lot of testimony from, uh, some of our, the Meadows Trail to the damage and, and same with the native.
Well, that's what I, I, I'm saying.
But then I guess, Matt, I guess maybe I'll direct it to you. Were, were you wanting more in the plan about the damages there? I don't know that I can quantify it other than to represent that they've confirmed that, you know, um.
You have to weigh, I mean, I, you know, I think, I think as.
I don't disagree with your point. I just wasn't clear on, because I, I guess I was being very honest. Like this didn't come out of a traffic accident, you know, people are getting, you know, killed on the highway kind of a thing. This was more about kind of overwhelmed neighborhoods and residents not knowing what to do and what we could do to try to help with the population. Um, so yeah, I guess it doesn't speak to that in part because that wasn't really where we saw the issue.
I mean, the report that you gave though leads with the damage to the, you know, it leads, it leads with the public safety element, you know, and the cost and the cost involved. I wish I had it in front of me. I'm sorry. I, uh, no, I mean.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to get more comments on it, but like I said, if the, the wind is not blowing, there's not, no good putting more time in unless you think it's, would make a difference, I guess is my, my point.
I think we're thinking out loud and, and I think like, you know, when, when, when I'm looking at the, at this issue through those three things, you know, two are relatively non-existent. Um, one is, is, is very legitimate. Um, but I don't know if it's enough to, 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 in my mind, is if, if it's enough to put, to put us over to the point where we need to do a hunt in close, in close proximity to residential neighborhoods.
And Phil, can I just mention one thing? I, when you said safety and in the, in the meadows, when the Edison, are you worried about people getting injured if, by bow and arrow while if they wandered in? Because I just wanted to tell you that incident of that is, I can get you data on that from the fish and wildlife. The incident of injury is next to nothing statewide for a very long period of time. And so I can, I'm happy to share. I can, I can.
I understand that completely and as I tell all of my municipal clients, it is so infinitesimally likely that it will happen and yet it happened here and the one of a million times.
That, that's true too. I just didn't know if you were aware that that, there were.
I, I am aware of that and I also know, because I've been hiking a lot of places along the Appalachian Trail in North Jersey and everywhere else over the years. And so, and the camouflage of the deer hunters in the tree stands is so incredible that if they don't move and laugh at you, you don't even know that they exist. But on the other hand, that expertise also allows them to be very careful. And the, and the accidents in deer hunting are really way, way more an issue with gunshot wounds than with bow. However, you have people allowing their pets to run in there. Um, and you have the incident of somebody entering from that side that's not really secure. That remains my, my big concern because we, it's on the Edison border. It's not our, their fence and that opening are not our town. Um, uh, the, the chief, it's a hard time getting patrols down there as it is. Uh, it just raises a concern in my mind. On the flip side is I'm aware, very aware of the environmental concerns and I've talked, talked about the health of the herd as well. Um, at times and we've seen times when it's been bad and the deer are scrawny. They don't look healthy. And then again, you have times like right now, they're all looking pretty good. And we had two fawns on the front yard with a doe. This was a good crop year because of the, the nature of the weather. Um, and the pandemic kept a lot of people home. So, you know, the herds did well, which unfortunately is not a good thing. But again, and as Terry said, she's put a lot of work into this. The plan's ready to, uh, you know, listen to our yes or no. Um, in the very near future, and the question is should Terry put more time into this? Or is it time for us to put the time in to read the plan over and make a decision yes or no? And I kind of lean on Terry's side and say, she's put in an extraordinary amount of work, talked to a lot of sources, put in a plan that tries to respect all of the concerns. And I think if we take the time over the next, you know, whatever it is, Terry, uh, to go over carefully and come up with a vote, I think that's what we need to do.
And, and, and I would love if you, I know you've only had it in your hands, you know, over the weekend. So, you know, if, like I thought some of the comments, I go, oh yeah, we should have done that. You know, you look at something long enough, you just, you've been, you forget to put it in. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
But.
Let me ask a question. Um, as it stands right now, how many people would be in favor of the hunt? Okay.
I, 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 I think reluctantly, uh, would be.
I think.
But that's reluctantly. And I want to read it some more. I did read through it, but I want to go through it again.
Got you.
Talking to the hunters and I come from a family of hunters. I have nothing against hunting, but talking to the hunters, I can't take the risk of little kids seeing wounded deer walking around town. So I cannot in good conscience vote in favor ever.
Thanks.
I've done a lot of research on this since being appointed to the board. I've probably done more research on deer hunting than I ever wanted to in my life.
Me too.
That's for sure.
And Terry, I do appreciate all the work you put.
I don't, I don't mean to sound defensive at all.
I did not mean to.
Oh, you.
Attacking you.
Oh, no, I know. I just, I was starting to feel it. So I just decided to say it. Sorry.
Yeah, no, I was not attacking you.
Alrighty, so I think, um, because I need to know, do we need to put more work into this? And from what I'm hearing that this is not an option for a, a, a hunt is not something that the council is willing to consider. So there's no need for me to have Terry continue to do more research on this because this is not some, a road that we're going to go down. So it's a moot point at this point. Um, what some people are saying that they're looking for, I think birth control or some other way of controlling the population. And from what we have heard and from all the research that was done, that the birth control method doesn't work.
It's, I, I can honestly say it's not worth pursuing that in Highland Park.
No, it's not because we've, we've talked to umpteen folks and this is not an option that, that works. And the only thing that we had to go back and we looked at a, a million and one times was the what options and the one option that we came up with was thinning the herd and having a healthier herd that would be in town. So if this is not an option, then it's a moot point and we need to take it off the table and stop putting resources, time and energy into this, into having these conversations and doing research for something that is not going to move forward.
Well, it, it, to that point, Elsie, I think the people who would want to know, uh, more about that, who didn't share the pros and the cons of both of it, um, you know, they could find that. I, I, I'm not inclined to have the, to have administration and put more time in, as you say, um, when we have more pressing things to do. Um, if the consensus is not to bring this forward and approve it. And I'm getting the sense that it is not there. Um, I really wouldn't test the, we, we have more important things to do, no offense, that administration needs to get to. And Terry has put in amazing amount of work.
I, I have to say, Emma's made this possible, because she really put in a lot of time keeping, keeping this moving.
And, and, and from what I'm hearing is that this is not something that we're willing to move forward with. So what we need, really need to do is to have a candid conversation with the people that are calling and saying, when is it gonna happen? And just say, this is not gonna happen, we took a vote, the consensus is, it's not gonna happen, and. We're just gonna have to deal with whatever, whatever it is, it is, it is what it is. We're not the only one that has this problem. I was with, um, Assembly Speaker Coughlin and, um, you know, some of the farmers, I was with the Farmers Association Group. And they wanna know what are they gonna do, what is the state gonna do, because it damages their crops and they lose a lot of income and, you know. It, it's a huge cost to them, but we're not in that era where there is, uh, fields and what have you. So if we wanna wait until the, the, the assembly, the legislator does something about it, then maybe that's what we should say. We're tabling this until the state makes a decision.
And my, uh, my other proposal was from what some people are saying. Does council wanna read through the report? Um, you have a chance to go through it in depth and look at all the material that has already been provided. Um, or, um, as Elsie says, are we just gonna have the consensus that we're not going to move it forward at this time? And leave the plan available for when we need to dust it off again.
Yeah, because it doesn't make any sense that we're not, we're not moving, we have tons of other things that's on the plate. So if we wanna say we wanna table this for another time, let's just say table it for another time, we, we're not interested in moving forward. Instead of Terry and Emma and me spending time and time and back and forth and meetings after meetings. Which we have done a ton loads of hours on this, let's make a decision of what we're gonna do. And put it out there, then go back to those folks and say, a, a determination has been made by the council that we're not gonna.
It's a, it's a work session, so all we're doing is looking at a consensus. We, not taking a vote one way or another, but, but I, I'm hearing the consensus is no, is to table it. Does everyone agree?
Well, the Animal Protective League of New Jersey, we never reached out to them, right? Who have worked with smaller towns of our scale.
Director or someone on the phone early on, I got some materials, I mean, it focuses on the education components, um, primarily. Um, which there's no reason we couldn't put some, some of the other elements out absent a plan. You know, we already have stuff on our website on some best practices with regard to plantings and things like that.
Basically, they're saying, saying like plant deer, put in deer resistant plants, but you're still gonna have the deers.
I thought they had, I thought they were, had given a list of non-lethal methods that could work.
Yeah, that fall, falls underneath, the, the one area where I will just straight out disagree, the science does not back up. Any infertility methods at this time, doesn't make sense for Highland Park, it is not scientifically based. And there was, there was some, I, I won't attribute that to that organization, but there were some organizations trying to push that message. And I, that's one area where I just don't agree, based on the, the, allow lengthy research we've done. It doesn't make sense on a host of levels, there are good tips for helping. Get the deer to go to your neighbor's yard instead, instead of yours, however, that doesn't really address population control. If that's what you're trying to do.
Terry, that's true, so, uh, you know, I, I think at this point, the consensus is to table this.
I'm fine with that, if that's what everybody wants, I'm pretty good with that.
I'm fine with it.
Alrighty, so, um, I will, this is gonna be tabled, and we'll just have to put something out there saying. What our decision is and moving forward.
We're, we're not moving forward with the plan at this time.
It's been tabled.
But we are not, we haven't ruled it out, okay. On the agenda for the work session.
Sorry, say that again, you wanna put it on the next meeting too?
No, I'm just saying, is there any other matter in the work session? Council, do we have, um, do we still have Ed? Um, is there anything, uh, Terry, on the executive?
You may have lost Ed due to weather.
Yeah, so I see nothing for the executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second. Second.
Good night, all.
Good night, all, be well.